You're on.
All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining the fifth academics committee meeting today. I'm looking at our attendees. We're a small but mighty group today. So we have some important topics that we're going to cover, but first let me go over this. As authorized by the governor's emergency executive order issued on March 17th, 2020, the West Contra Costa Unified School District will conduct the board academic committee meetings via video conference, teleconference and to further notice, the meeting will be streamed via Zoom. Mr. Aurelio, can we do roll call first and then I'll talk about how to participate in the meeting?
Definitely trustee Smith Folds.
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi.
Present.
You're an accountable.
Great, thank you. So participating in the board committee meeting. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities through the Zoom app or by telephone to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. Raise your hand by clicking the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine. If accessing the meeting by phone in order to be recognized to speak, you must be logged in with your first and last name. And your hand must be raised before public comment begins for the item. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss the items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to the items presented in public comment. All right, may we have the land acknowledgement, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Smith Folds. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichenia, Moabma, Carkin, Oloney peoples. And acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Approval of the agenda. Just give everybody a minute to take a little look see at the agenda.
Chair Smith Folds, I move to approve the agenda. That's us.
Great. I second. And you vote yes, I'm assuming?
Yes.
I vote yes also. Great. Um, public comment for items not on the agenda. Mr. Aurelio, do you have any public comment?
I'm looking to give folks a second if they want to raise their hands now to show that you want to make a comment. Not seen any hands at this. Oh, wait, we got one, I think.
I see one.
All right, Mr. Brandon Brown, you may unmute.
Hi, thank. Hi, thank you. Appreciate it. Very nice being here. My name is Brandon Brown. I am the president of a company by the name of School Yard Wrap. Think Schoolhouse Rock, but for this generation, we have contracts all over the country. And we performed at many cities, about 150 different schools. I'm bringing this to attention because we recently performed in West Contra Costa Unified School District. And we provided some of our curriculum content that one of the schools is picking up and purchasing. And I just wanted to introduce myself to the district and advocate for our ethnic studies supplemental curriculum. And the work that we're doing to be more prevalent in West Contra Costa Unified School District. We all know that it's going to be something that is going to be actual state law for high schools. However, my fervent belief is that the learning should start in elementary all the way through middle school. Because all we ever typically learn when it comes to at least black history is slavery and segregation. And so School Yard Wrap is here to teach more beyond that, beyond just Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta. But full ethnic studies curriculum and content. And so I don't know how much time I have. I want to honor the time we have and just say I've, I would like to eventually be able to present on a law for a larger scale to show everybody what we're doing throughout the country.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you so much. And everybody out there, we're kind of like church, get up, do your testimony. And then, you know, when it gets a little much, you'll see a finger. So that's kind of how we do the time at the academic committee. So, you know, speak your truth. And then, you know, if it gets long, Mr. Aurelio or Mr. Gonzalez Hoi or I will give you like a little finger. But that was perfect. So here we go. Staff update, Mr. Aurelio.
Good evening, everyone. Reverend Aurelio, associate superintendent. So just a quick update on school reopening. So last week on Monday, we welcomed back 6,338. That's the right exact number of students in person at all 54 schools. I was very wonderful. I was able to personally visit, I want to say 12 of those schools in the first couple of days. I was running around town the first day trying to get ahead of the media. That was, that was day one. They of course spread out and went all over the place. But it was really wonderful to see families showing up that just the excitement that you saw with, with children and kids. I did see the, I was at the ends that I did the whole May Valley on Tuesday, was able to see all the schools and just a lot of excitement. Obviously, we would like to be able to serve more of our students that want to come in. And we're continuing to try to increase the numbers, the adults that are volunteering and working in our hubs and our intervention model programs. It's interesting because you have such unique programming across the district. You can't just put your finger on this is the schedule for elementary and you have a range of offerings, which is tailored more towards the school and what, what they can offer. But I think in general, those who have attended the in-person, we're hearing a lot of positives from, from those families. I think obviously our biggest need is how do we increase the number of seats for our families? But that's where we're at. As far as spring and then later today, you can hear about summer as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Aurelio. And then, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, do you have any questions? Any comments, any questions about spring?
I have one comment, but I have one question as well. Chair Smith Folds, do you want me to just do them together?
Whatever floats your boat, sir. We're.
All right. Love it. So my question for you, Mr. Aurelio is how many hubs and how many interventions that we currently have?
And I don't have that data in front of me. I can get that at some point. And if I get it before the needs over, I can, I can give you an update on that, the exact numbers. Yeah, I have to draw that up. I didn't pull that up on.
No problem. Maybe it's, I mean, if you don't mind adding on the Friday memo.
Oh, yeah. That's actually, that, yeah, we can definitely add that to the Friday memo. I know that trustee Smith Folds also wanted to get a demographic breakdown of the students we're serving. I think I saw some numbers last week around that and, you know, definitely serving percentage wise, more African American students, I think in hubs. When you think of the percentage of kids being served in person relative to their percentage breakdown of the district. But we can get those numbers and put it in the Friday memo for everyone to see.
Thank you for that. On Wednesday, I'll probably have more questions for the, for the board meeting. My comments, yes, it's going to be that pretty similar to my comment on Wednesday. You know, I am doing a hub and it's been really exciting to see kids and be around kids. We have eight students in our hub. And Ms. Hardy is also in our school who's also doing a hub there. So I've seen her around. And I've also seen trustee Reckler around as well, who has a hub, a mirror vista where I'm doing my hub. You know, obviously, for, for our school, I have seen that most classrooms do not have a second person, which has been, I know, a challenge to fulfill. I feel like, you know, we have obviously overpromised quite a bit to staff and to families. I'm glad to hear that we are filling all the spaces that we can of people who are interested. I think it's hard because I know that stuff is working incredibly. You know, as much as, as quickly as they can to fulfill our promises. But you know, for most schools, I'm hearing that it's just one person in the room. I think that if teachers are comfortable doing that, that's fine. But obviously, I think that it's been hard for, for them to do the both in-person teaching and their own classroom in Zoom. We have kids, in my hub, we have kids from four, four different classrooms. So it's almost impossible for the teacher to answer all the questions. Like, I'm really thankful that I'm able to share that space with her because I'm able to answer those questions, support the kids. I can't imagine a teacher doing it by themselves. So I have seen that challenge. I know we have all seen some positive COVID cases already. I'm glad that we haven't seen more. But, you know, we have been getting a lot of emails about when are we fully reopening? And at the end of the day, and I don't want to spend too much time right now, but I'm glad we're taking it slow to go fast later on. So we can learn about the issues that we're seeing. We can learn about our facilities, which are not all fully ready still, right? We're still working through them. Like Kennedy High School, we're still working through some of the issues. So I'm glad we're going slow. People can't, can't forget that we're still in there a pandemic. We're still seeing issues. My brother-in-law today was tested positive for COVID. Like, we're still on this pandemic. So, you know, I ask for patience of anyone who watches today or Wednesday or whoever. That's like my, my mantra right now. Patience, go slow to go fast. And I'll, I'll talk more about all this on Wednesday, but I am thankful for you and your staff, Mr. Aurelio. So I hope that you are able to share that with, with all of your staff. Because I know everybody's working incredibly hard to serve as many kids as possible. And over 6,000 to me, it's a really, really positive start. It's more than I thought we were actually going to be able to serve. So I'm really thankful we're there and that we're taking every precaution possible to do it safely. That's it. Thank you, Chair Smith Folds. A little further, but.
I could add trustee Gonzalez, I know a number of my directors, I know Mr. Chocot, who will be speaking later, is also running hubs as well. And so a lot of us are holding multiple jobs at this point. It's, it's, it's its own challenge. And I, and to speak to some of those positive cases we had last week, some of them did turn out to be sort of false positives, which is good to hear that it wasn't anything that drastic and dangerous.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. I forgot to ask for public comment on the spring update. But if you do have public comments, please feel free to raise your hand. I don't think I have a question, but I do have a comment. I just think it's imperative that the staff or that the district is very transparent with the number of kids who are being served and where they are on that intentional, where they are with the intention that was set. There was a specific intention set for spring reopening. And are we meeting that specific intention with the number of children and who we intended to serve? Who, where the intention was around? So I want to make sure that we're doing what we set out to do first and foremost. Everything else can be a cherry on top, but are we doing what we set out to do? And if we're not, we can't just keep going without addressing that. If we know the number of needy students in the district and we're not serving that number of students, then we can't give ourselves a sticker for serving other students. We have to figure out why are we not hitting that number of needy students that the intention was around? The intention was set to hit those needy students. So I want us just to make sure that we bring, continue to keep in, in line and in focus with the intention was to open in the first place. The second part of it is, I just want to make sure that the district is, is, is implementing the protocol set in place when there's a positive case. Everywhere from way they're informing the school, the teachers, the parents, the other cohorts, other hubs, the way they're informing the overall general public, because everybody deserves to know this is not a, you know, a kid has license in room 3B situation. This is not, this is not that type of, type of transparency. This has to be full, open transparency at every level, all the way throughout the district. Has to run a clean line all the way through because we're trying to build trust. And the only way to build trust is to be 100, more information than not, more details than not, more communication than not. It needs to be someone saying, okay, wait, that's way too much communication. When we get to that point, then I'm going to be like, great. But until we get to that point, we need to have as much communication around the positive COVID cases, around who we're serving, around the intention, all of it needs to be as, as transparent as possible. Because that's going to be the new standard of demand. There is, this district and the community is starting to demand transparency and accountability. So that's all I have to say. It doesn't look like we have any hands up, Mr. Aurelio. Do you want to speak?
I don't see hands, but I, I do want to speak to. So I personally supported to the sites last week. That first day, we had positive cases announced. And then we did very thoroughly sort of go through protocols to inform obviously any students who were in contact directly and staff that were contacted directly. And obviously, we, we do the quarantine protocol and making sure if they were already on campus, they were isolated. If they were not on campus and learning those families, that they could get tested again. And that they would be tested upon their return as well. That's the other piece that's really important to note. And then communicating to not just that class, but communicating to the school, especially those families who are in person. That was really critical that they receive. Obviously, there's HIPAA rules. We can't share too much information about it personally. But like you said, it's more than just a license alert. You know, it's not a license alert. But we did obviously go through, it was, you know, honestly, a, a good test of our system, right? To make sure that we are prepared because it did happen so quickly to, to go through that process. So I think, you know, the operations team is very well prepared for that. They've been communicating with our, our leaders about that, giving them the support they need to, you know, move quickly if they need to.
That's very good. That's good to hear. That's good to hear. I'm, I'm wanting the district to publicize that. You know what I mean? Like, this is what happened. This is the protocol. Is the dashboard up and running?
That's what I was saying. And I know that Tracy Logan's working on the COVID case dashboard. That's going to be public facing as well. And I think she did the first week. I don't know if it's up and running. I have to look in the website to see that.
Okay, perfect. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, anything else before we move to our first discussion item?
The last thing I would just say is that, like, obviously, it's never positive that we got positive cases. But I am glad our system is working where we are getting notified, right? And we know right away, right? We have 54 schools, right? So I expect we're going to have hiccups and we did have hiccups on the first week, right? But, you know, in a way, like, from the school all the way to the board, we got notified, right? We got to work on a transparency piece. I totally agree on that. But at least, you know, we are aware. So, so in a way, I'm glad that the system's in place that you just talked about, Mr. Aurelio, are working. And now that we just, we just have to tweak them, right? And reinforce them. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi. Okay, so we are moving to discussion item A, which is council of elders. Thank you so much to the council elders for being so flexible with last Wednesday, the 21st. We ran a little long. We appreciate your flexibility to be able to come back today. We're going to make sure that we get you in at the very beginning because we, 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 we said our apologies out there. We, sorry, sorry for that, but thank you so much. And we want to make sure that you have plenty of time to give your proposal and to answer questions and to have discussions. So we appreciate Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Chocot for being able to come back today. Thank you, gentlemen. And Mr. Aurelio, can we just introduce?
Yes.
Who the council elders are, what they, you know, that kind of thing, and then we can get started?
Well, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Gabe Chocot, the director, and Michael Gonzalez. And Michael, I, I don't, I don't remember exactly the role under council of elders. Like, are you the chair? Are you the, the president, the vice president? And you can unmute, I believe. I don't want to give you a false title.
I don't have one. I, I'm on the executive committee, but I'm not.
Right.
An officer other than that.
Okay. And then Gabriel Chocot, you can, I think, are you able to share your screen as well as needed?
Let me check.
Make sure you have what you need. And so it's going to be a shared presentation by the council of elders and council of elders. And Michael, maybe you can speak a little bit about what is the council of elders? Because I think it's important for people, the general audience to know. Obviously, I know a number of you who make up the council of elders, but I think it'd be great for us to hear sort of what's, you know, the mission and vision of that, of that group.
So the council of elders is comprised of former teachers, site administrators, educational researchers, and other professionals who are African American and want to support the district in supporting African American children in the areas where we believe there are some unmet needs as well as some unique needs. And we all have children and/or grandchildren that have gone through the district. We've been in the district for two, three, four decades, although that's not a requirement of being a part of the council of elders. But that's just the way the makeup is. So we're long-term educators, long-term parents and grandparents and professionals that have worked in this district as well as in other districts in a variety of capacities. And we want to help black children. We want to help the school district to help black children. And we see our experience and longevity as a opportunity to provide that point of view to the district.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. And so I'm going to just turn it over, Director Chocot and Mr. Gonzalez. You may take it over from here for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelio. And good evening, trustees. So Pastor Gonzalez, I think, did a, I mean, a great job of opening up with what council of elders is. I put together this presentation. It's a brief overview of the original proposal and the relationship that we've landed on between the district and the council of elders. And then Pastor Gonzalez, I'll, I'll pass to you at that point, just to make sure that I've kind of covered that. Or if there's anything that you'd like to expand on from my relatively brief presentation. And then once we open up to questions, I think more might be teased out. But with that, I'll just, I'll, I'll jump in. I captured this from the original proposal on the outline. I'm not going to spend too much time on this because I think that this was the explanation of what council of elders was. Obviously, it was covered better than I could do by, by Pastor Gonzalez. So, but experienced African American community members that are invested in the success of West Contra Costa as a whole and specifically with the under support of African American students in our, in our system historically, I think is the, the through line on that. So the original proposal, the conversation was going on longer than this, but the official proposal was made on November 30th, 2020, and it was comprised of four parts. One was the online academic recovery program hub. Two was the accelerated tutorial program. Three was social emotional mentors. And fourth was a systemic reform effort or an instructional audit. And not all of these are in the, the current agreement where I'll be focusing on a blending of the, the program hub and the social emotional mentors, which is what we landed on in terms of where we could find some agreement to run some pilots this year. And I do want to be clear, we're talking about running some pilots to really try to track data as to whether, what improvement we're able to find through the program that the council of elders has come up with. So what we're doing, we're combining tutoring and mentoring under a contract with Rich City Kids. Originally, we were going back and forth between whether this was going to be a new description of a district job or we were going to do some third-party contracting. And in the end, we aligned with this contract in order to get up and running this year to be able to implement something under this pilot program and get a sense of what's working, what's not, so that we could tweak that and for possible changes in the fall as we move forward. So the district is making a one-year financial commitment of $100,000 to pilot the programs, which again is combining. I actually wrote down tutoring there, but I think the, that's a bit of a misnomer because it, it, it is built around a tutoring program, but it's also trying to work with, to accelerate learning possibly in a push-in into the existing class structure. So I want to make sure that I'm being somewhat clear on that. And again, the, the $100,000 pilot. So this is what, it's a, to further the definition of the programs, just to make sure that we're all talking about the same things. That's been a lot of the work that has happened up until now, is making sure that when we're using certain language, that we're talking about the same things. Because in proposals like this, you know, the district can think one thing, the council of elders can think of another. So bringing that together and getting, getting aligned, I think, was very important. So mentoring. Again, this is language that I brought out of the original proposal and there are some changes going forward. And so it is starting from the idea that social emotional factors relate, related to early childhood trauma. And this is a language out of the original proposal, maybe connected to the opportunity gap that is evident. And that we need to address the social emotional issues that may be at the root for some of the, the, the opportunity gap that we're seeing amongst our disaggregated data in the district. The academic hub pilot, this is going to be piloted in three schools with high African American populations. It's mirror vista, which of course I remember that one, but I'm never going to forget mirror vista. And I'm completely blanking on the other two schools at the moment. It'll pop into my head as soon as I shift from the slide, I'm sure, and I'll, I'll update that. So I apologize for that. And it's small groups of African American students with a preferably African American teacher working to accelerate learning and closing the opportunity gap. So it's trying to focus on, on those two areas, accelerating the academic learning in small groups and then addressing social emotional needs. And then tracking the data with those two to see what is working, what's not, so that we can try to push forward with that. And the rich city kids, I honestly just grabbed this off of their, their website. So I'm not going to read anything off of that third bullet because Pastor Gonzalez, I think you can speak better to that aspect of it just because I'm not personally familiar with that, with that particular organization. And then again, really just the, the title of the slide is what I'm going for, supporting our students as a community effort. I really wanted to stand in a place of just working with the council of elders to align understandings and to try to push this forward because we have some really talented, experienced people that are working to try to support our African American students. And so that's my space is working on some of that, that alignment and getting them to creating introductions with the schools for the pilot programs. And with that, I'm just going to say thank you and I'll bow. And Pastor Gonzalez, if you want to jump in to expand on any of that or clarify anything?
The only thing I would clarify is the rich city kids is an academically focused organization run by a former teacher of the district and uses a variety of platforms to engage students from the creative arts to more traditional academic approaches. And it's just a matter of trying to use both sides as a brain and, and movement and all of those factors that we know support learning and to do so in a manner that is engaging even in a, in a virtual setting. And also it's, it has a family component, like I believe they have family art night coming up really soon. And they've also been a support to the Mafaniquio program of the district as well. So, so they are. So, so they are, while they're a nonprofit, community-based organization, they have really significant ties and roots within this district.
And just to hop in real quick, Tara Hills and Murphy. So those are the other, it's Miravista, Tara Hills and Murphy are the three that were doing the, the academic hub pilot program.
So Mr. Chilcot, in the, in the chat, it says Aloney, Miravista, and Murphy. So which ones are?
Oh, I'm sure that's right.
My, my team put in the chat, so I'm, I'm going to guess Martina's right on this one.
Yes.
I should, I should have kept my mouth shut. I should have gone on mute and just not even said it, right?
Okay, so let's just for, for record, say.
That helps, that helps point out something, though, that Tara Hills was in the original group. But we
That's right.
with the principals and we wanted to make the, our support truly supportive and not interfere with what they had going on. And so it needed to be a fit. And so we switched from Tara Hills to Aloney because it was just a better fit at this time for that particular school.
Okay, so for the record, we have Aloney, Miravista, and Murphy Elementary Schools as our three pilot schools, correct, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Gonzalez, oh, thank you for your presentation. I really appreciate it. And trustee Gonzalez, Hoi, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith Folds. I have a few. First of all, good evening, Mr. Chilcot and Mr. Gonzalez. You know, since last meeting, I keep getting confused every time they mention Mr. Gonzalez. Started last meeting, they're like, Mr. Gonzalez is a hard stop at four. And I want to be like, no, I don't. I'm okay. So I'm glad you're here and great name, of course. Good to see you. So I have five questions for you, just starting to start us up. So how many students does the pilot program work with?
Well, we're still calculating that, but at one particular school, there are 36. And so we expect there'll be fewer at the other two, just for a variety of reasons. So the target is going to come in around, somewhere around 75.
Okay, 75. And then how were the three schools picked?
Let's see, I, I think Gabe should answer that question because it was a collaborative effort, but the district led the selection process.
Yeah, so we met in, Antoinette Henry Evans was, was in that meeting as well, so it was definitely collaborative. And it was a relatively high African American population, the demographics, demonstrated achievement gap, like we're, we're looking at the data. And then schools that weren't receiving as many services as some other schools. So for instance, it wasn't going to, like specifically, we, we were edging away from Title I schools in our initial planning out how we're going to do that because we wanted to find, as Pastor Gonzalez said, like a good fit. It was a fit of need of not being overwhelmed by a number of services and being receptive to us coming in to, for the pilot. So that's how we chose those three. And I'm sure I'm missing something in there, but those were the big, the big parameters.
Okay, thank you. And maybe this one's for, for Mr. Gonzalez. So what type of maybe measurements or data are we utilizing to measure the success of the program?
Well, again, it's a pilot, but what we're, our focus is, 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 the premise is when relationships are established, students will improve. And you can track that improvement in a couple of ways. Number one, fewer disciplinary actions. Number two, they, they will actually come to school and be present, so attendance should rise. Number three, as the presence is established and the relationship with the school site is improved, then we want an improved relationship between the classroom teacher and the, the caregiver in the home. And then as a result of those things, what should emerge is academic achievement consistent with the expected growth for a particular child i- i- in a particular grade. And so interestingly, two of the schools are K8s. So it's a little different expectation there because of the, the, the number of classes that they'll take. But in the, the, the schools where we're working, well, in every school, the principals have expressed an interest in improving reading comprehension as a bridge to all of the other content areas. So primarily looking at academic achievement, reading comprehension improvement, attendance, and improved behavioral response to the instructional environment and then improving the homeschool connection as well.
Thank you for that. That's very helpful. My next question is about the funding. So the funding, it sounds like it's paying for the contract with Rich City Kids. Is it also paying for the teachers in the hubs or is it just for the contract?
It's just for the contract.
It's just for the contract, okay. And what are, what are we hearing as the feedbacks so far?
We have not actually, we, we have, we're laying the infrastructure and we haven't gotten to the point of having feedback yet.
Got it.
But we will.
Maybe that should have been.
We don't have it yet.
Maybe that should have been my question. How long have we been piloting it so far?
Well, we're about to start. We, we
Oh, I'm sorry. It hasn't started. I was so confused. I thought we had already started when we came back in person. Okay, okay. Got it.
Working on this a while, and I'll just say it's taken a while to get to this point, given all of the things that the district has had to deal with, things we've had to deal with. And so it, it, it has, it was truly our intention to start this sometime in the fall. And, but we, we, we are where we are because of where we are.
Got it. Okay. Now it makes sense why you answered about the feedback. Yeah, we have no feedback, obviously. Thank you for that, Mr. Gonzalez. I think that was my last question, Chair Smith Folds. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I guess one of my questions is, what strategies or what, what strategies or what do you want to leave when you go? So like, what strategies do you want to leave with teachers or kids or the parents? What, what tangible things are going to be left behind that we can say that this was there? How do we, how do we see that? Is it parents learning how to write emails to teachers more efficiently? Is it kids learning how to advocate for themselves? Is it, you know, does that make sense, strategies, parents having strategies around making sure your child has a library card? Making sure that you have a pass to a museum? Like what are we, what strategies are we leaving behind after this program?
So believe it or not, I could almost write a thesis, a graduate studies thesis on that question, but I'm going to save everybody the experience of be rattling off. But this is the thing, is that I'll, I'll just give one personal example and then I'll go right into the general answer. My personal example is being at my daughter's teacher conference back-to-school night once and being told by one of our teachers in this district that I don't teach children, I teach math. And she said that to our face. I don't teach children, I teach math. The same teacher was greeted every day by my daughter who said, "Thank you and goodbye" at the end of every day, in eighth grade geometry. It was not until the last day of the school year that that teacher responded and said, "You're welcome and goodbye." What we are looking at is how important relationship between the, the student, the child, and the caregiver is. And so what we hope is left behind is that there'll be a value for establishing communication of value and understanding the social emotional foundation that supports content acquisition. I once did, as a researcher, I did a study of us, this highly specialized school down near Stanford, where all the professors send their kids, they cover no content until third grade. None. And by sixth grade, seventh grade, they have kids that are, have obtained patents. So that's obviously a very unique environment, but the whole point of it is, is that as a society and as school districts, we focus more on content than the social emotional aspect. And so what we're hoping to leave behind is that the schools will have a reverence for, or at least an acknowledgement of the, how important it is to have these relationships that are formed within a social emotional kind of setting and, and, and accelerate learning quite rapidly because there is that kind of, that, that kind of work is being done, that, that the content is important, but it's, it's not as important as a relationship between the child, the student, and the household. So there'll be evidence of that through the way the school interacts with the children as well as i- i- interact with the parents.
Okay, thank you so much for that. And then, Mr. Araleo, do we have any public comment on this item?
Well, let's see. I know we also have other members of the Council of Elders Executive Committee in the audience. So if there's anything they would like to add, maybe if they can raise their virtual hands as well. I don't see any hands being raised. I don't want to voluntold anyone, so.
Okay, so if we don't see any hands, and we'll keep it open for a minute through our, oh, there we go. We have
The real world of joy. Okay, I'm really curious. I don't know who that is, so let's find out. The real world of joy. You're, you can unmute.
So this is Antoinette Henry Evans, who's using her grandfather's iPad. And so that's why I'm up as that. So sorry, so sorry about that. I just wanted to say too, what, one of the things that we hope we leave, our, our parents having a clear knowledge, academically speaking, of where their children are. We find that so often parents don't know and don't understand the language that's often used in education when we talk about proficiency or, or, you know, meeting or approximating and so forth. And so I think that that will be a valuable thing for parents because they'll now have some language and some tools to go forth with and actually have discussions about where their children are actually performing and having an understanding of that.
Thank you, Antoinette. As Seda Wilson, you can, just a second, you can unmute.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. This is Seda Wilson, teacher at Richmond High School, president of Black Educated Network, and also treasurer and high school representative by the Executive Board of United Teachers of Richmond. I just wanted to clarify, the Council of Elders, is this group for the district or is this a spin-off of a group such as ASAC or part of APAC, part of any of the other sub-commissions that we have in the district, just to clarify?
Thank you.
Would you like to answer that or would you want me to answer?
I'd have to.
Okay, I'll answer that. No, we're not a, 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 a organization of the school district at all. No, we're just people who really have similar interests, similar passion, and wanted to use that passion and that interest to help the district. Oh, and let me return to one other thing because I, I think Gabe said it. He, he mentioned something and it, you know, when we talk, sometimes we could say things. And, and, and I just want to clarify, he said, "Under supported for African American kids." My personal position is not under support, it's just misaligned. And so that, and, and that connects with the formation of the Council of Elders is that we see a lot being done, but it's not aligned and therefore it doesn't have the velocity it would if there were some alignment, more alignment and i- i- in the efforts of the district to help not only black kids but all kids.
Yeah. And I think that's all the comments for hands that are up.
Okay, trustee Gonzalez, Hoi, discussion?
Thank you, Chair Smith Folds. I have a couple of comments. The first one, you know, Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Chilcot, thank you for being here. A few months ago, I think, maybe a few months ago, a few weeks ago, Mr. Chilcot and Mr. Araleo and staff presented some data to us when we were talking about testing. And I always go back to some of the numbers that they gave us, which is what keeps me up at night. Two of the data points were that 29% of African American students in our district are reading at grade level. And 16.3% of African American students are at a grade level in math. That's what keeps me up at night. And so I'm thankful that we have the Council of Elders alongside OAS, alongside of ASAC, alongside of many, many other community groups, alongside of staff that want to move us forward in the right direction and try things so that we can move the achievement gap for, up for African American students in particular, who've been left behind for generations, as we all know. One of the things in the presentation that I really appreciated was, Mr. Chilcot, out on there, explained for mentoring, social emotional factors related to early childhood trauma may be connected to the opportunity gap. Yes, of course, right? We know that. We see, we see this as, as teachers, we see that in our community. And we have to try different things to support our students move forward from that, from the very beginning, right? We have literally first graders, second graders who are already behind in our district. We have to try from early all the way through 12th grade. So, you know, I'm, I'm glad we're giving a chance to everything, you know, that, that good folks, thoughtful folks in education like the Council of Elders want us to try. This is a one-year pilot, right? I think in a year or in six months, maybe we should get an update to the academic committee so that we can revisit it and see how it's going, get feedback. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work and we move on to the next thing, right? But we have to try urgently with intention, right? And this is something that we should also have a conversation with Dr. Hurst when he starts so that, you know, he can also give us his input on every program that we bring forward in our district. So I'm not sure if, you know, you, you need, we need direction here to move this forward or anything like that. But, you know, I'm looking forward to learning a little bit more. I, I would like more Mr. Chilcot and Mr. Gonzalez just about the program. I do feel like I, I didn't really grasp, like, as you could tell, I was even confused a little bit on just like when he was starting. So I would just like a little bit more information that I can even just read when, when we're approving the contract. I will most likely approve it because of the reasons that I just mentioned. But I just want a little more information. And again, I'm appreciative of the Council of Elders for moving this to us and wanting to have a conversation because I do, I do believe it's a, it's, it's urgent what we're dealing with. But, but I would, I would like a little bit more of, of, of details. Thank you.
And just to clarify, I don't think we need direction necessarily from the academic committee. I think it's important for the academic, academic committee to know what this is. So when you do see a contract for Rich City Kids, you have that connection of, oh, that's the contract connected to the work and the partnership with councils of, of elders.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that.
So I Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. So I agree with trustee Gonzalez. I would love to see you guys come back with, I would love Rich City Kids to come back and it to come back with like, like a presentation just to academic committee, if not to the whole board, but especially to academic committee, just to see what, what's that initial testing look like, like how, what's in it, what are you using to initially see where the kids are? And then what are those points of growth that you're using, those assessments and points of growth that you're using throughout the program to ensure that the kids are growing at the pace that you want or growing individually as you would have them? I would love to see what that, you know, IEP looks like for each kid, like an individual education plan for like, this is with this kid, we're doing this for this kid, they're here and reading, we expect them to be here. This is the program we're going to use to get them there, they're going to be there three days a week or, you know, et cetera. I think that we have to have, we have to have that data embedded in the contract to make sure that we're able to track, you know what I mean? To make sure that we're able to see how well the program's going. And then we can start using some of those things and it can kind of multiply itself out, you know what I mean? I want those best practices to spread throughout the district for all of our school sites because the opportunity gap doesn't just stop at one school, you know what I mean? African American students at every school are affected by the same, you know, the same gap in their education. And so I want to make sure that what we, what works well here is then spread out to everywhere. But I want to have that solid foundation of this is where this kid started and now this is where this kid is halfway through the program. This is where we expect the kid to be at the end. And this is how we stair-step to get them there. This is what we're doing. So then again, other principals can talk to principals, teachers can talk to teachers, parents talk to parents, and students talk to students, like, like this is where I started and now this is where I am. And this is how I got there. I used this program. I was in this program. I had this mentor, et cetera. So that's some of the things that I would be looking for and So that's some of the things that I would be looking for. And I don't think when it comes to educating our children is a one-way street. I think there's many paths to educating our kids. And I think that we have to acknowledge that. There are many roads to getting our children what they need. I'm a firm believer that every kid deserves an IEP. Every kid deserves an individualized education plan. And every kid deserves as many resources that they need to get them to where they need to be as successful young ladies and young men. And I think we should start in pre-K, you know what I mean? We should start at the very beginning. And making sure that we're setting up those resources and those supports for our students. I have to say that this district, uh, with the Council of Elders, with Oasis, with Ben, with APACs, we have a real, we have something starting that's good. You know what I mean? With asset, we have something started that's good. We just need to keep the legs up under it. We need to keep the legs up under all those programs. And our intention needs to stay focused and not derailed into making sure that African American students are moving forward fast in this district, you know what I mean? So we only get them for thirteen years. So that's where I am. So I appreciate so much again, Mr. Chilcott. You have a real Mr. Rogers vibe going on today. It's amazing. Um, so thank you so much for coming, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it. And we are look forward to seeing you guys with an update. Once this pilot gets moving and once you start serving African American children, please come back and update the academic committee because we will be looking forward to it. We want to know how well it's going. And again, what strategies we can use to multiply and spread that goodness out throughout our district.
Wonderful.
All right, so we are now moving. Hold on, my children are looking at me. What? Yeah, get a snack. Bye bye now. So the next thing is we are moving to uh, B, discussion item B, summer school updates, special education spend and extended school year update. So do we have everyone promoted who's going to speak to us with that?
I am looking and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, do we need a quick break?
Oh, always, because then I could have yelled at them when it wasn't being recorded. So that would have been great. So let's take a, let's take a ten minute. What about that? That's fancy. Trustee Gonzalez hoy, you want a ten or a five? I'm gonna leave it up to you.
We can take a ten, thank you.
Great. So we are at four fifty. I will see everyone back here at five o'clock. We're gonna take a ten-minute break. Thank you, everyone. See you back in ten minutes. Bye. And before we get started, Mr. Ray, are you going to introduce our panelists that are going to speak to this?
Yeah, there's a few folks here. So I'm gonna welcome back Director Gabe Chilcott. Um, we have Director Sonya Neely Johnson and Director Rachel Avanesian. We have, I think Kristen is with us as well. Camera's off right now. Uh, we have Kristen Hardy, who's our self director. We have Will McKeed, the Director of Oasis, the Office of African American Student Achievement. Did I miss anyone? Because I know there was a number of folks to present. I think that might be it. I know we also have, in the attendees, other members of our office, my office, if some questions come up. But if that's the case, this is a hefty presentation. I want to make sure we have enough time. So I'm gonna turn it over and let the team get going.
Perfect. Thank you so much, everyone. Looking forward to it.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I I stopped myself from going on and putting on a different cardigan just to prove how strong my cardigan game is, but I'll save that for the next meeting. Um, okay, so I'm gonna share screen. I'm gonna start this off and then I'm gonna pass it off pretty quickly to the special ed team, Rachel Avanesian and Sonya Neely Johnson. Um, and then we'll come back. As Mr. Aurelio said, it is a relatively weighty and wordy presentation. And I'm gonna be holding the majority of it, but I do want to make clear before I start, this was totally a team effort. Um, it's just in, for efficiency sake, the bouncing back and forth between a, you know, a large number of presenters. It made a little bit more sense for me to hold some of this, but uh, I want to speak to that. So this is going to be the summer programming update. Um, it is an adaptation of a previous presentation. So some of the slides may be familiar to folk. And we're going to begin with just really talking about the parameters and the difference between a couple of the different program options. So with that, I will pass it off to Rachel Avanesian and hop back in in a little bit.
Mr. Chil- Chilcott, hello, everybody. For anybody who doesn't know me, I'm Rachel Avanesian, the Elementary Special Education Director. We're excited to be here tonight presenting to you on extended school year and our summer offerings. So for anyone who's unfamiliar with the term extended school year, we refer to it as ESY. That is the mandated special education summer programming for students who have that service listed in their IEPs. So this year, extended school year is going to run June fourteenth through July sixteenth. It'll be twenty days of programming total and it'll run Monday through Thursdays. No school on Fridays, with the exception of the week of the Fourth of July. Because of the holiday, we'll be running our programming Tuesday through Fridays. Our extended school year sites, you can see those listed at the chart on the right. So our high school sites are going to be El Cerrito High School and Deanza. Our middle school sites will be Penole Middle School and Dejounte Middle School. And then our transition program is for students ages eighteen to twenty-two, and that's located at our Vista campus. For elementary, our ESN and preschool programs will be at King Elementary School, Tara Hills Elementary School in Collins. And our elementary mild moderate classrooms will be at Harding, Lupine Hills, Nishtrum and Dover. And this year, we did make an effort to spread the programs across the whole district to help with the social distancing efforts and make sure that they're all centrally located to also help with transportation for our students. The district will also be offering different summer programs, which Mr. Chilcott will be talking about. These are the general education programs. Most of the sites are matching up with the same ESY dates, but each site is going to have their own unique schedules and own unique times and plans. Lastly, there's also going to be the summer bridge program. And that is going to be attached to the fall opening with different dates depending on the different school sites. And that is to help form that bridge for students who are matriculating to a new school. So for example, students from elementary school transitioning on to middle school, middle school to high school. Next slide, please. And I'm gonna hand this one off to my colleague, Sonya Neely Johnson.
Hey, thank you. Uh, my name is Sonya Neely Johnson and I am the Special Ed Director for Secondary. And so what I'm gonna do is just kind of review some of the things that Ms. Avanesian just talked about. So ESY, like she said, stands for our extended school year, but it's specifically for our students who are at risk for a significant regression. And we also use it for recoupment of skills. And so, um, if you think about school ends in June and then it doesn't start back up until August, that's a lot of time and a lot of regression happens for many of our students who are in more of our restrictive programs. It is voluntary and it must be in the student's IEP. So the program is going to be in person this year. Um, we start June fourteenth and I think the state opens up June fifteenth, so we're in alignment there. But we will also be doing a lot of our in-person services like speech, occupational therapy, adaptive PE, um, programs for our visually impaired and our deaf, hard of hearing students. Our schedule is going to be very similar to what it is right now for our students in preschool. So for preschool, there'll be two times that they can choose from, eight thirty to eleven thirty or eleven to two o'clock. And for kindergarten through transition, the program is gonna go from eight thirty to two P M. Class sizes for preschool will be up to six students. And for our mild moderate support needs students will be up to seventeen students. And our extensive support needs students will be up to twelve students. We will have, um, what's a little different this year is that we're going to have not, not only the teacher there, we normally have two aides. This year, just because of everything that we have going on with COVID nineteen, we're gonna have three aides in every class. We will also have a virtual option available for families that just aren't ready to come back yet. Um, and those services will be given very similar to what we're provide, we provided this past year through distance learning. And we call that our I- I- our ISLP, which is our individual student learning plan. So services may look different than they do in person. Next slide. So, um, our case managers actually have done a great job contacting all of their students and their, on their caseload in the ESN and the MMSN classrooms and help register them for summer school. Um, so right now we have over seven hundred and fifty applications turned in. Um, our clerical staff are now going back and following up with phone calls to make sure that, um, parents want to continue with summer school so that we can make sure that we have everything in place when we start on June fourteen. Um, meals will be provided right now in in-person spring. It's a snack, but we will have meals provided. And I would say breakfast and then the lunch. And then transportation, we're gonna continue to have the two options that we are having now for spring reopening, and that's the parent mileage reimbursement and also busing via our first student. And more information about, um, the safety plan for the bus program is on our special education website. Um, I wanted to also just kind of highlight some of the, the, what students would get at our extended learning program. And so, um, the, of course, they'll have their academics, which would be the ELA and their math components. And we're using, um, standards-based, um, I want to say standards-based programs for both of those. Um, our unique program will include our functional skills and then we'll be doing mystery science and arts attack. So students will have an opportunity to do some enrichment as well. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Rachel to talk a little bit more about assessments.
Sonya, so in addition to the ESY programming, we're also going to be running assessment hubs this summer. We knew that with the impact of distance learning and COVID nineteen, we do have many assessments that we need to complete. So our priority this summer will be to complete and finish all of the open initial evaluations. Initial evaluations are students who are in the process of being identified as in need of an IEP for the very first time. So we do want to make sure that we get, we, we find students that are in need of service and get them identified and get those started for them. And then based on the capacity of the different assessment hubs, we'll also work on our triennial reviews every three years. In special education, we do reassess students. Um, the assessment hubs will be located on a variety of campuses. Those are still in the process of being determined. And it'll be teams of school psychologists, speech therapists, occupational therapists, who will work together to get the evaluations completed. Our, um, we've worked very hard this year to make sure that those assessments will be completed very safely and in line with all of the different CPP protocols. So parents will be asked to consent to testing in the conditions. Um, we'll have hard copy consent forms. And we're also able to send that electronically to families through informed K twelve. And so our PPE and our different safety protocols are posted on the special education website and will also be noticed to families. And then all of our assessors, those people who are going to be completing the testing, they're being provided with specialized PPE, so masks and, um, different clear physical barriers that they can use to work with students and help keep everybody safe. And then, um, just as a heads up to parents, you may be requested to bring your student to a particular hub to complete those evaluations. But the assessors will, um, work with you on that particular process. So thank you, and I think I'm gonna hand this off to Mr. Chilcott.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Priorities. Uh, so this, this came up, um, already from, uh, the special education lens, but just focusing on social emotional learning, um, being a priority. And shifting away from, um, sort of the perception of what summer school can be. Um, yes, there's some level of catch-up that we need to be doing with students, but getting students excited to be in school. We have a number of students that haven't been in school for over a calendar year and/or haven't had experience at the site that they either, that they'll be going to. And so getting them excited about school is really important. There definitely are some specialized supports and funding for EL learners, English language learners. Um, similarly targeted supports and funding for African American and black learners. We are aiming for small class sizes, um, and in a single cohort to maximize both learning and safety. Things are obviously changing quickly in terms of what is and is not allowed by the state, but we are committed to, um, to those safety protocols. Attending their regular schools, um, we're really trying to maximize the number of students that are able to attend their school of record. Um, and that's why we're opening so many schools. And there's an increased number of partnerships across the system. Um, this also is basically the layout of the presentation. So this is kind of an advanced organizer for what I'll be covering a little bit more in depth as we go forward. So the school offerings, there are going to be thirty elementary school sites, eleven middle schools, and that includes the K eights, ten high schools, and that includes adult ed and Greenwood are included in that count. And the approximate cost per day of the program is between seven and ten thousand dollars. Um, we are in the building process, so there needs to be some leeway in terms of, you know, cost and just numbers of kids and staff that we're gonna have on sites because we are building that. Um, but it's pretty fleshed out at this point. So the school offerings, um, as Ms. Avanesian stated in the opening, there is some variation. Um, so the elementary days, we have a minimum of eight days at one school and a maximum of twenty days. And the bulk of the schools, um, I want to say, uh, shoot, I changed screen, so I can't find the exact number. Um, but it's something like twenty-seven of the schools are gonna be opening twenty days. Middle schools is a minimum of eighteen days and a maximum of twenty days. And there's some variety there just for context and, uh, doing different things. And high school is the same with a minimum of eighteen and a maximum of twenty. Um, some of that is still in flux, the exact days we're gonna be open. So I do want to state that uh, they could align a little bit more over time, which honestly is my guess, but we're, um, again, still building. So that's nine hundred and eighty-seven point five, uh, classified and certificated staff required for that. And the overall money is about six point four million dollars is what it's looking like at the moment. Student prioritization. So the student prioritization is beginning with the same reopening prioritization that we had done previously. Um, and if you look at these indicators, that's what we used to prioritize the five percent for the spring reopening. And we're using the same, um, structure for the way that we pull the lists, um, to prioritize for summer school as well. Um, and it's just a matter of balancing out the capacity of the adults that we have across the system with a number of students that we're able to bring in. But the number for summer school is gonna be much larger than it's ever been in the history. Or at least in the the thirteen years that I've worked summer school in this district. So L cap and LCP indicators, so that'd be English learner, foster youth, socio-economically disadvantaged, special education, family in transition. Then if there are grades, we're using grades. Uh, star scores are used as well to prioritize so that we have some academic measures. Um, historically underserved students, um, and attendance and engagement, making sure those students that have not been quite as engaged over this distance learning. Social emotional indicators are input by site, um, and chronic and technology or chronic technology concerns. Um, also, this is run centrally, but it's also vetted by site personnel just to ensure they're going through because they know the kids and they can, um, they'll, they'll have some noticing about any, because any centrally pulled list, there's always that issue with, uh, with missing a kid here or there. And so we make sure to have the, uh, the site leaders look that up. I'll pause, Ruben, it looked like it came off.
Well, because I, I don't want to confuse the issue because we've talked about extended school year and how that it is directly connected to special education. But I know on this slide, we named special education as an indicator for the general ed or summer program. I just wanted to clarify that for people that you can be in special education, have an IEP. That does not mean you get, you automatically go to ESY. But there are other programs like this version of summer school that is available for students who do have IEPs as well. And correct me if I'm wrong, but that, just want to clarify that to not confuse the two.
So you're talking, can I just add? So I think you're right, people do get confused. And so the ESY is for our students who are in more self-contained classes. That's a one easier way of distinguishing, which is our extensive support needs class, which is the most restrictive. And then the next is our MMSN, which is our mild moderate. And then the next is our MMSN, which is our Mount Moderate Support Need. But there are self-contained classrooms all the way up through age 22.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Okay, so the elementary program offerings, again, site-based offering, so it's different site by site, but it's really prioritizing hands-on learning, prioritizing subgroups or having subgroup supports built in, social emotional learning built in by design. And that's at every site, although it may look somewhat different site by site just to best support their population through their context. An inclusion of kids with IEPs who do not have designated ESY. So that speaks to, to what we were just covering there. Okay, so that's the elementary. Oh, and Will McGee, Director Will McGee will speak to this specific offering, the OAS and Freedom School Partnership.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Roger, Mr. Chilcutt. We're going to have some fun with that. I know, we're going to have some fun. We love each other a lot, you guys on this. And the academic subcommittee fosters that too. But so for the OAS, what we've been doing is working with our school sites on various ideas that they can implement for their Black or African-American students. So one of them is the Freedom School. There's a partnership we have with the Children's Defense Fund, which is CDF. And basically Oasis is providing the financial means for, I believe, up to 50 children to attend. It'll be housed at King Elementary School. And then what we did was gave the first opportunity for children from King Elementary School. We opened it up to the Kennedy Family of Schools and then we'll open it up district-wide. We're going to hope to get an update as far as the applicants for the children that did apply. The cool thing about Freedom Schools, you all, is that they also are doing something called an SLI. And I believe it's like a student leadership, and I can't remember the acronym, but they have the opportunity to hire high school students to serve as junior teachers or junior instructors. And so that's a pretty cool thing. There's the Freedom School, one pager just on what the curriculum is, what their philosophy is. And then ideally, we would do a Freedom School and then depending on the grade levels, if the Afrocentric School is approved in concept, we would love for those children to become students of the Afrocentric School, but more on that to come. The other thing that we're doing is discussing a STEAM program for girls. Oftentimes, we don't see our young ladies, especially our Black ladies, represented in the, the STEAM area, engineering, et cetera, and so on. Richmond High and a lot of our schools have the academies, but the Engineering Academy is where we don't see a lot of our females. So we are looking to further some discussions we had with Girls Inc. They were in the district before. We're looking to bring them back or have the discussions on what it would look like. And then offering the program for girls. And so we're trying to hammer that out now. And then it'll be supported by PAS, the Programs for African-American Student Services and Supports, where we would look to recruit those Black girls. And then lastly, what we did was we spoke with our school sites. The Ed Services Department and Mr. Raylio held various, what was it called, Ruben? It was like workshops or opportunities for principals or site leaders to come and ask us questions as Ed Services and Directors. And so you'll see this resources for Black students, families and employees. And some of our APACs, as well as our school sites, looked at these resources and they're actually implementing those. And so we did share that so that principals could take advantage of that. And we're always here as a resource for our principals pertaining to Black student achievement.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. All right. And so Mr. McGee came in to speak specifically about Freedom School and some of the other OAS offerings. We don't have time to go through just the number of specific exciting programs that are coming out, but I wanted to highlight, I want to bring him in to, to highlight that one just because it's, it, it's really exciting and so strong. But I also want to highlight that there are just a lot of really interesting insight-based programs that are being pulled out. And so one of the things from this is trying to capture that so we can continue to re-envision our summer program offers, offerings as we move forward and really being able to support the whole child. Middle school, all six middle schools are open. They're currently planning on serving 724 students. Most are planning on 621 to 716, but there are some that are considering the full five weeks. And again, we have the plans, but there's some shifting going on, so that could change. So I want to make sure that I highlight that. And there's also some planning around bridge programs for incoming seventh and eighth grade students. Middle school especially because it's only a two-grade span, have students that just have never been on-site. So it's going to be interesting in the fall when they return. So these bridge programs. And again, for those of you that remember going to middle school or junior high school for the first time, lockers, switching classrooms, changing for PE, there's just those things that bring about anxiety. So you're not entering the school ready to learn just on a daily basis. So making sure to bridge them into some of those as well as social emotional. And again, really trying to make it, I think I said this down there somewhere, but almost like a, a summer camp on some level, right? Like making it exciting and fun and getting people hyped about going back to school. So Helms will also have a standalone program for newcomers. Richmond High School as well will have a newcomer program. And it'll be with the summer school, but it's, it's a separate track just to support the needs of those specific students. These plans all include counselors and scouts to support African-American EL and other historically underserved populations, both with one-to-one and small group check-ins. So each one of those plans has different options going that direction. And it does have academic components, but it's truly focused on socialization. And again, I'll just keep on coming back to really trying to make school fun. Learning is fun, learning should be fun. And we're just really trying to focus on that or the schools are with their plans. High school program offerings, same, all eight high schools will open. I'm currently planning on serving 1,510 students and 500 virtually. So the high schools are having a bit of a hybrid approach to make sure that they can maximize the number of students that they're able to safely serve. Most plan on being open from 614 to 716. Obviously, in high school, credit recovery is going to be paramount. We want to get these students graduated and moving on successfully, but it's also the bridge for new students. Again, newcomer support, leadership band and other enrichment and acceleration programs are sprinkled throughout this. One example of that is Richmond High School will have an African-American Leadership Institute. So really trying to focus on those acceleration points. And as I said, with the, with the middle school program, this includes counselors and scouts, and it's the exact same verbiage. So I won't read it again, but just highlighting that we're maximizing all of our staff to be able to, to be able to support students in small, in small groups throughout to make sure that everyone is being supported. Community partnerships. Thank you, Martine Blake, for putting this together. We have, we're partnering with over 20 community agencies to support social emotional, emotional well-being. This includes tier two and tier three supports, enrichment and art, physical and nutritional health, academic tutoring. And that list could go on. So there's a lot of partners that are being brought in this summer. Again, more than a bet we've ever had in this particular district. And that kind of ends the overview for summer programming. So we're open. Thank you very much. And opening up for, for any questions to clarify.
Thank you so much for the presentation, everyone. Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, right before you start asking your questions, I do want to uplift the Q and A. Ms. Quaylar was asking for acronyms and Mr. Raylio and Mr. McGee, thank you for answering those questions in the Q and A with the acronyms. Educators know that education is like an alphabet soup. It's always an acronym for something. There's always like some letters thrown together. So we are, we are trying to remember to tell you what every acronym means. So we will get better at that. It's something that we have to bring back to our remembrance all the time because it's, it's very disjointing for a parent not to know what the acronym is. It's very disjointing for an educator too, because sometimes I'll just be like, oh, I know and I really don't. So it's, it'd be great if we could just keep that in mind when we're doing our presentations to make sure that we put the, the name of everything out to the slide. So we all will be on the same page because we want to make sure that we're all have that equal say in what we're talking about. Okay, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy, you're up.
Thank you. And talking about acronyms, our sped department created a whole new one. So we'll add that one to ISLP. I'm going to remember that. It's a good one.
I did write that one down too. Actually, I was like, ooh, that's a good one. Okay.
Thank you, everybody, for being here and for your presentation. It was really well done. I have seven questions. I had more, I crossed them out as, as you were presenting. So thank you. First one is, I'm all over the place on my questions. Let me try to like figure out which one last first. So have we surveyed, I think that I heard, I think it was me, Neely Johnson, said that case managers have surveyed families' interest in the program already for summer. Please correct if I'm wrong on that. Have we surveyed our general ed students as well on interest for summer?
Okay, if Mr. Raylio wants to jump in with the overall one, I know the sites have. So there's been communication back and forth with the, the principals around some site surveys. So I can speak to that part because I was in some of the spaces where that was happening. In terms of a district-wide survey, I can't speak to that. I don't know.
Well, and let me, sorry, let me jump in around, sorry, I had to go off camera for a quick second. Someone needed to come in the room. And then my dog came in and it's, it's a whole thing. But we are, we held off just on some of the communication around summer because we did not want to confuse the summer with spring. This spring reopening took sort of precedent and we had to sort of put hold off on the summer. We are going to get back into communicating more around summer. We have a target for the first week of May to release message to sites, like now they should be doing the outreach. Now they should be messaging, doing the invites to families. Obviously, they have the prioritization list. They know which kids they want to invite back first and offer summer programming. So that's going to really ramp up now that spring is open and we can start shifting our prior, our, our attention now to the summer.
Great. And then was that, was that right on hearing case managers have already surveyed interest for sped families? Okay, wonderful. So you know, when it comes to the staff required, I saw 987.5. It made me so nervous. That's, that's my starting comment. How many teachers from that are we going to need for the summer?
So I can, I'll jump in and Gabe, you feel free to add. I know that when we, we took proposals from each of the sites, because we're doing site-based summer programming, principals really did a lot of the legwork in connecting with their teachers and really doing sort of personal invitations. And, and a lot of them have already identified staff that are working for summer. So it sounds like a really big number, but fortunately, they've already identified, I would say, the majority of those teachers and a classified staff that would be working summer. And human resources is in the process of just finalizing sort of that, that work. So every site has their staffing list and they're literally going through and saying, yes, these, these are my committed folks for the summer.
That's great. And Ms. Hardy, do you feel like we're there for special ed as well? That the interest has already been kind of shared with the sped department from teachers?
We have. The positions have been posted and we actually have had a very strong response from the special ed staff across our providers and teachers. So I think we're going to have a, a good match.
Oh, wonderful. And Mr. Gonzalez, if I can add to, part of where, I guess I feel less stressed around the staffing is we, we're paying, not paying the same rate we typically pay summer programming. It is in-person and we, we're going to be doing the per diem hourly based rate. So that's a higher rate of pay than most staff typically gets for summer. So that's helping with the recruitment as well.
Got it. Oh, good. Thank you for that from.
Just providing one quick more clarification. I'm sorry. So for the case managers, last summer, the special ed department decided to support families with registration. Case managers would individually reach out to families, just those that are eligible for extended school year to ensure that families understood what was being offered and to walk them through the registration process. So we followed that same process this year in the, you know, parents' home language to remove barriers for registration. Because there is a little bit of additional paperwork around the special ed extended school year offerings to make sure that, you know, parents understand they may not be at the school site where their child typically attends. They might have transportation. So just to make sure that we have all that information because it takes a lot of time for special ed to ramp up for ESY. So that has happened. And now that we've transitioned back to a full day, we want to make sure our families, you know, made a choice that feels comfortable for them. So we're recalling every parent just to make sure that, you know, now has anything changed for them? So that every family who's eligible has the opportunity to participate and understand what they're signing their students up for. So just want to clarify, our RSP and full inclusion students will be able to access the general education offerings on the campuses and will be canvassed, you know, with all the general education students on individual campuses. So just wanted to make sure that we clarified that little bit of a distinction.
Thank you for adding that. And what a large lift and incredible lift. So please, you know, thank the case managers on our behalf for doing that because, you know, that one-to-one interaction, being able to answer questions, I'm sure also help with the nervousness that's going on and everything. So, so thank you. And thank you for adding that. You know, if you all end up doing this presentation again, please make sure that goes on the presentation because I think it's, it's pretty powerful on the work the staff is doing. So thank you for that, for adding it. So my next question is on Mr. Chilcutt and Mr. Raylio, you both were mentioning about how the programs were created at each site for general education that are going to be offered. Could you talk just very briefly about how that worked? Who created them? And another question tied to that, are they going to be posted somewhere for families to be able to see them at the individual side websites or on the district website for transparency?
So, go ahead, Mr. Chilcutt. I mean, I, I can, so the website, yes, I think that, that you make a really good point of that. We, we should definitely have all the offerings in some central location. But then obviously, because it's individualized by school, the school website should also reflect their summer offerings. We did, like I said, we asked for proposals from each of our sites that were willing to do summer. And over 40 some odd schools did proposals and in those proposals, they included programmatically what they wanted to do, how they were going to support African-American students, how they were going to support English learners. Like, think of a mini-site plan. I mean, it wasn't that, that heavy of a lift, obviously, but those types of staffing hours, we had some basic information that we collected around each of this individual schools. Mr. Chilcutt, anything else you want to add about program-wise?
No, and I would just say that it, it was the school teams that put it together. So when we looked at the proposals, we could really see, and then I think that's why there were so many teachers that came in is because it was a team effort, like on the site, they were thinking about how they could support their, their community. And so I think that would just be the, the direct answer.
If we just stay out of the way, it helps.
I, yes, thank you. Thank you for adding all those things. I completely agree. I appreciate that. So, so that goes to my next question, a little bit more about development. So actually, what is the class size number for all of our cohorts? I didn't really, I didn't see that listed.
So I know we're in that transition with the state and county health. And so it's, you know, I, the number we originally were planning with was 16. I don't think that's shifted or changed. I also see the 20 olds on, in here. So if he wants to jump in, he can always jump in. We are definitely going to use the county health guidelines. We know that obviously six foot versus three foot, that has shifted for spring. We're still using six-foot distancing. As we move towards summer though, there is more flexibility there to that. But we're, we, we don't want our cohorts to get large. I mean, that, we did name our cohorts being small. So I, you know, I don't want to give you a specific number like 16, but that's the number we initially started with when thinking through summer. And then there is Dr. Walt.
Hi, Dr. Walt. Good to see you. Not to put you on the spot, but I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add.
Ruben said it exactly right. Summer is about really connecting with students, making a tangible difference in their learning and their connection. You can't do that with super large class sizes. So we built this entire model on something that we couldn't do in the fall because we don't have enough rooms for everybody to be a 10 to one, but we can in the summer and do it well. So that's our focus. And that, that way also, we don't have to. So that's our focus. And that, that way also, we don't have to worry about what did the governor say on the fifteenth? What did he, what did President Biden say tomorrow? We don't have to continually react and adjust. We're building a model purposefully, not because of COVID small, purposely because of academic achievement and student connections small.
Thank you for putting it.
That needs to be the message.
Yeah, absolutely. I completely agree. I mean, even if we just did the COVID side and I'm heading into a comment here, but you know, and I'm one trustee, but I'm in full agreement with keeping it small as we transition to the fall. I will continue to learn, continue to break, you know, the gaps that we're seeing in the, in the system under the current pandemic. So I really appreciate you both kind of sharing that perspective and you, you know, that you have my support in keeping it small and not changing it from here until the summer, you know, so, so I hope it sticks and it stays and we don't see anything different in the next few, few weeks. Because I don't think that I'll change my mind in the next few weeks. So, but anyways, thank you for that. So, so you know, towards the end of the presentation, I did see, well, we did, we saw a site on middle school and high school. Mr. Shalka, I was a little curious about elementary. How many students are we planning on serving for elementary alone?
Let me actually look at the slide again.
Yeah, I noticed in the notes of the slide that the element, the middle and I had numbers of students. I don't know if we captured that in that slide for elementary.
Oh, you know what? It didn't make it into it. Yeah, sorry. We were working on it, but somewhere along the lines, that number didn't make it in. Let me get back to you on that.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Maybe you can go on the Friday now. I already asked Mr. Early for a couple of things. Maybe if you're putting it that, that'd be great.
For the end of the meeting, all the different things.
And then, you know, obviously I love the idea of the middle school and high school newcomer program. And I was wondering if we're going to have the same for elementary.
Interesting. No, because we have built that out at Helms and Richmond High School, it's a bit of an extension of an already existing program. And so although we have numerous E L supports built into the individual sites, we hadn't conceived of a newcomer specific, but yeah, let me look into the numbers. It's certainly interesting.
I do want to say that it's not totally summer related, to be true, Gonzalez, away, but we are looking to add new additional newcomer teachers for elementary. So currently we have one newcomer teacher that's directly working out of Grant Elementary School. Who we find, and we're looking to add additional sites for next for the fall. I know that Director Rissigno is working on that now. Specifically, and I was trying to pull up the grant summer offerings to see if that was something they named specifically in there. And if I see it, I'll let you know. But I know that once we get to the fall, that we will be expanding our newcomer support for elementary.
Thank you for that. And, and you know, please don't use my full name. Remind me of my mother. I felt like I was in trouble.
I don't know why I said your full name. I just started reading it off.
Like, oh no, what did I say?
I probably was going to use first names. I was like, well, that's not appropriate. Let me go just whole.
But you know, I mean, I was going to make this in my comment, but since you brought it up, I would, I would love to see something for newcomers in the summer just because I do think it's a real challenge and problem the, and during the year that we haven't been able to figure out district wide. Maybe if we were to start it in the summer, maybe it's a way to, to kind of start breaking those barriers that, that happened during the year. Like I mentioned, I think it was during our Yale presentation or bilingual presentation. I hear from teachers all the time. I saw in my own schools, right, of, of teachers who are getting newcomers throughout the year and they don't know what to do, right? Schools that don't know what to do. Maybe if we start these programs in the summer, we'll figure out how to, how to start communicating it, how to like build a program in the elementary like we have done in the middle school and high school very successfully. Just an idea, but if we don't have enough time to do it, maybe it's something we can look up for next year. And then my last question is around some of the COVID infrastructure and safety. Are we going to see the same safety measures that we're seeing now, including asymptomatic testing for staff and students? And all the safety measures that we have in place right now? Or is there going to be anything different?
Turn that over to the lead of operations, Dr. Tony Mould.
So that right now for spring, we have very specific protocols. And our COVID prevention plan talks about following the guidance from the California Department of Public Health, CDC, or the county's health department. And we will follow the most strict of the three. We do know that as summer comes, there will be changes in regulations. And so I can't give you a specific answer, but I can tell you that we're prepared to continue to have all of the necessary materials. We are already stockpiling P P E. So we're not expecting that, we're expecting we're going to continue to be buying it, not only in the summer, but in the fall. So we've got that plan going. We are continually looking at different methods of testing and monitoring. So those will continue to be available as the guidance provides. It keeps changing, but we are not jumping on the new guidance that same day either. We're allowing people to have that space and grace to process and learn because it took us a year to get to here. It's going to take us time to transition our own minds and bodies back to a different routine. You can't just jumpstart it.
Thank you for that. And thank you, everybody, for the great presentation and being here. Chair Smith Foles, that was my last question. Thank you. There are serious comments.
Thank you so much. Sorry, I was writing down the quote that you just said, Dr. Will, time to transition because you gonna hear that again. So I'm just going to write down that you said that, put that on my little computer. So one of the questions I have is what are the stressors that are going to be on staff when we start feeding kids again? Not the snack, but when we start feeding children again in the summer, what have we thought about the stressors that are going to be put on? Our food services? Have we thought about the stressors that are going to be, are the kids going to eat in the classroom? Are we using lunchrooms now? What is that feeding process going to look like?
Once again, I'll turn that over to the operations.
So glad I came. I was just here to be hanging out at six and Ruben had to go to school. So yes, we are absolutely looking at that. Most of the programs are not a full day so that we're not in full meal service again. Because we knew that that was going to be an issue. We also know that all the way through next school year, the federal government has already approved continuing the feed everybody seamless summer model. So we're already working with our labor partners to look at multiple options as we move forward for food. But it'll be probably somewhat similar to what we're doing now in the spring where we'll continue having the community feeding program outside of the summer school and a snack within the summer school model. We're also, we had a great idea today that we're going to pursue to try to remove some congestion that our labor partners suggested. So we're going to continue to work through it, but we will have options available.
Okay. And then the number of safety personnel on campus during the summer because there's going to be more kids on campus. Are we adding any more C S Os or what's the plan for that?
There'll be less kids than during the normal school year. We've already given the opportunity for each site to maintain the staff that they have. So folks that normally would be off during the summer can now work as well. So C S Os, yard duty at the elementary, all those different pieces are still going to be available and part of the.
So more than we have now in spring, though, there are going to be more kids now and more kids than we've ever had in summer programs. So there, there is going to be a need for some additional bodies on campus for safety reasons, correct?
And schools have set up their model of staffing with that.
Okay. And then, so I heard you say we're going to keep it around ten to one because we want to concentrate on academic achievement. So that's very important to keep it small. We're trying to increase the love of school again. Do I hear that accurately?
Yeah, it might be a little higher in certain subject matter courses at the secondary, but it's not going to be anywhere near a normal class size. But you don't want to go ten to ones it and you have twelve kids that need a P bio. Then you would have twelve kids in the class. So logic shall prevail at the secondary, especially in the credit recovery.
Okay.
Portion where it's a matter of graduating.
Are aides attending summer school with the kids that have, like if they had an I E P with an aide in it, those aides have committed to coming and they're going to have their same aide? Or is it a possibility that they may have a different aide with them during summer school?
So HR actually just sent out letters, communication to all the one-to-one aides. But when we also do our application, we actually ask the aides, the case managers, when they're calling the parents, they're also asking the aides, are you willing to work summer? And if they're not, then other aides that are not one-to-ones can apply for that position. But yes, we try to keep the aides with the students that they know because that actually makes the most sense, right? Students are more comfortable, but we do, we're opening it up. And I think what I also said too, in the other slide was that last year, we, in previous years, we've only had two aides in a class. Just, we're talking about the program class, not specifically for a student. But we're having three aides in every class in addition to any student that has a one-to-one.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then you said that there's going to be assessments that happen at certain sites, like the I E P assessments, like you have to go through the whole, you get the psychologist, you get the, the O T, you get the speech therapist, you know, all during your assessments before you get an I E P. Is there an online version of that or parents have to if their child is the first time their child's getting I E P, they have to come in person?
So it depends on the particular student and the type of assessment that they need. So we actually, all of this year have been able to conduct many of our assessments virtually. Depending on the student's needs, you know, the comfort level of the family, and if we're able to get the data that we need. The assessments that will be happening in the summer are the ones where the I E P teams really feel that the assessments need to be administered in person. Some assessments can be done virtually, some can't. So this summer, the focus is on the assessments that we have to do in person.
Okay, I do appreciate the fact that you are open to families' comfort level because that's going to impact the kid's performance too. You know, it all kind of trickles down to what we get back from a child is how comfortable they feel going in and a family feels going in with that. So thank you for keeping that open. This was a very good presentation. I think that's actually most of my questions. I would love for this presentation to come back to the full board. I think it's a value to have this presentation brought back. I do have to say, and I will save it for my comment, well, I say it twice, once down and once in the comment. It's very clear to me that if you, Mr. Raylio said it best, if we get out of the way, sites have the abilities to provide for their community, their individual school community and the greater community at large. If we give principals enough resources and time and enough support, then we can see some dynamic, different programs coming out and the options coming out. Summer school certainly doesn't look like old summer school, and I think that's an important thing to say. It doesn't look like how it's always been done. So I expect different results because we're giving different, we are offering different, we're putting it out there differently. And I'm excited to see what comes forth. I am very cautious about the safety. I want to make sure that we still maintain safety. Summer doesn't mean the pandemic is over. It just means that it's the pandemic and it's hot. Do you know what I mean? It's still, the pandemic is still here. The weather just has shifted a little bit. So I want us to make sure that all of you who are on the line, you have the safety that you need in place to keep your students and your teachers and your staff and your admin safe because that's the most important thing. Okay, it looks like we have, and we have nine minutes before Mr. Raylio has to leave us. So we're going to make sure that we get that one. Looks like we have one caller.
We do.
I sound like the radio disc jockey. We have one caller in, Mr. Raylio. Let's see who that is.
Let's see, Mariela Cuellar, you can unmute and begin your comment. Hello, Mariela.
Hi, hi, everyone. My name is Mariela Cuellar. You know me, I, I'm a mother of Richmond High School, but also I work as a preschool teacher assistant for special education. And I'm very excited to hear all of these programs. Like, like always, I, I come and I hear and I learn. I work for the special education, but I, I would like to always have in mind that even though I work in the, in the department, I don't know all the acronyms and I want, I would like for that also is the same for the public, for the families. So thank you. As trustees meet falls, other suggestions that I would like to see is that I heard that they were going to put the information in the website, district website for the summer proposal. And also it may be in the schools, but I would like to suggest that if you can send that information to the families email, so that way they can have it also. Is there a way for the families that, you know, would like to volunteer to, to come to the summer programs and also for the future. I would like for this special education department to think about more trainings for the paraprofessional. I would like to see CPR, that all of us have CPR requirements and that I think is something that we all must have. It's, you know, we, it doesn't, for me, it's important that I have it because it wasn't a require for me to have it when I was hired with the district, but I had it because I was thinking, I was looking for other jobs and they require like preschool teacher, preschool aide. So I would like to see that. And also I would like to see more early childhood education for the teacher assistants. So that way we have more knowledge in early childhood education. So we know how childrens learn in this early years because this is the foundation that if we understand how childrens learn academically, socially and emotionally, I think it will, it will be a better foundation later on in their school years. And I just would like to say thank you for letting me speak and I'm going to be here and listen and learn.
Thank you, Ms. Cuellar. I forgot to mention, obviously, so obviously we're going to be promoting our summer programming, but I did actually have the opportunity last, I want to say it was Thursday, to do an interview with Univision and spoke to summer programming. I don't know, I didn't get to see if I aired, so I have no idea how I sounded or I was on TV or not. But I did do an interview with Univision around summer offerings. And earlier today, I did another interview with Univision around our spring reopening. So yeah, if anybody watches Univision, wants to tell me, I'm going to be on TV, let me know.
Thank you so much, Mr. Raylio. And then, Mr. Gonzalez, your comment?
Thank you. Mr. Early, you already got hired somewhere. You have to become even more famous. But okay, anyways, those jokes, I'm still resentful that you're leaving us.
So that's one of my references. Okay.
So Chair, Chair Smith Foles, I completely agree with you. I would love to see this presentation go to the full board and hopefully our questions helped. You know, you can add some of that to the presentation that we've asked because I think it was a very strong presentation. The public, I think, would be really benefit from hearing a lot of these programs that we're offering this summer because I know it's been a lot of work on all of you and really well thought out. And my comments are really more around the safety. My first recommendation would be Chair Smith Foles, that maybe we kick the can over to the safety committee to kind of get a presentation on the safety measures for the summer program. Ones that started developed, whether it happens in May. I mean, I would love for us to hear them, but I think that it probably makes more sense in, in, in that committee. Okay, I see, Dr. Will. Wonderful. That'd be, that'd be great. Just because I want to learn a little bit more about that and what we're going to do with more students. You know, from just being in a hub for a week, I am really thankful for the work that was done to keep staff and students safe. I'm seeing so much progress. I feel really safe in the classroom, but it's because of all that work that happened, right? And, and I completely think that we should continue to do asymptomatic testing of both students and staff throughout the summer and even the fall, right? I mean, not only one person, but I also think that, that it's building trust with, with everybody. I also think, Dr. Will, this is really more for you and for facilities. As we walk the schools, you know, what I keep hearing is we order enough P P for right now, but like everything else is backlogged, right? I'm not sure if this already happened, but I, I think that we're all concentrating on the, on the, right now, this first couple of weeks of opening the spring. But if we can think ahead and already order everything we need for the summer, you already done that. Great. Because, you know, starting schools with, without certain things like hand sanitizer, like that's really scared me, right? hand sanitizer, uh, like that's really scared me, right? So uh, uh, I just wanna make sure that all that is ready for a larger programming. Um, and I know you, you seem to already be doing that, so that's great to hear. Um, and I think that was my last comment. Uh, thank you, Chair Smith Foles, and thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you so much. Uh, Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, can we get an extension just to six-ten?
Yeah, of course. Uh, let me make a motion to extend to six-ten.
Okay, I second and your vote, Trustee Gonzalez Hoy.
I vote yes.
And I vote yes. Um, so this is what I think that we need to do. I think that we don't use the resource of special, our sped department enough. I think that they understand how children learn, and I think that they understand the individualization that needs to happen with kids' education. So I would like to make sure that the sped department is at, at these tables, when we're making these plans and these proposals and these, you know, if they're not, they should be. And if they are there, they should have a mega, a megaphone type of voice in the room, because again, they have an idea of what's really necessary for children to learn on that individualized level. And I think that that's where we need to really go to. When we go back to brick and mortar, we need to go back with the understanding that every child learns differently, and we need to be able to recognize and be able to resource those children's learning capacities. And I think that's uh, sped has been doing it forever. So they are the experts in the room on how to recognize and how to resourceize those, those kids. Resourceize is not a word, but I like it. It kinda went with recognize, so I threw it in there. Um, I really want us to, to understand that when the seasons change, when we go from summer to fall, we do not, we do not need, we don't need to lose the idea of multiple plans in place. Options, 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 site options, parent options, it's just the best for the children who we are trying to serve. We are coming, we're coming back in a pandemic. We left because of a pandemic and we're coming back into a pandemic. We need to have options on the table. The, everyone has said it. Everyone here has said it. All the, the powers that be have said, options. We're putting options out there, site-based options. Sites are in control of what they know that they need for their community. Sites are asking their teachers, and because they're asking and the sites are have that power and control, they're getting buy-in. They're getting, they don't have to beg someone to come back. People are volunteering to come back in summer because they're like, I believe in the program. I believe in how we're going to serve these kids. I don't wanna lose that momentum when we expand and the seasons change. Does, does that make sense? Like, I want us to keep that focus at the site level. I want us to keep that community-based school idea model in place and get our admin involved and our teachers at the site involved, because they know the students we're supposed to serve the best. We're at this high level. We need to get the people who are right there talking to the kids, know the families, know what the students need to get that investment really, really at its complete peak, and that's only through options. Keeping those options in mind when we're talking about our ELL students, keeping those options in mind when we're talking about OASIA. We need to give our ELL department and we need to give OASIA the power in the room to create. They know what these students need, they know the programming that they need, they know the resources that's required to close those gaps. We keep talking about gaps, but we have to start talking about solutions to closing those gaps. And that's with resources put in behind those programs and policies. Um, again, I would love for the summer school to come, this, this presentation to come to the full board. I do agree with Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, that safety aspect needs to come to the safety committee, because we've gotta take a deeper dive. We have to take a deeper dive to make sure that we have all of our i's dotted and our t's crossed, because the bigger we get, the bigger room for error. And we don't wanna have any error on this. We already seeing some things that we need to fix on this micro level. If it's gonna become a macro level, we have to get tight and right really quickly. So that's gonna be a deep dive that I think safety needs to have. Okay, fantastic. Um, any more comments, Trustee Gonzalez Hoy? No? Great. Dr. Right, Dr. Raylio.
I love it.
We will see you later.
I'll thank Dr. Raylio, that worked. I just wanna say goodnight, everyone. I do have to hop off to get to my, my class, not to be a doctor, but my class.
Thank you so much and good luck at school.
I will see you all soon.
All right, bye. Everyone, don't leave. Dr. Wool is here. He's gonna keep us going for the next eight minutes. Um, bye, Mr. Raylio. Okay, so the next little agenda item we have, and we are wrapping this baby up, is the academic committee, next meeting date is May twenty-fourth. That's gonna be a short meeting, and it's a short meeting because we have the reclassification that day. So we're gonna, we're still gonna have our meeting, but it's gonna be um, shorter, because we are going to reclassify. Uh, we're gonna go to the reclassification. June twenty-eighth is the meeting. After that, we may have a meeting in between. Just so everyone know, we may have a special meeting sometime in May, maybe before the twenty-fourth, maybe after. We're gonna kinda figure that out offline. And then our future agenda items, we are gonna talk about um, our new school programs, and we're gonna talk about our race and equity. And we're just gonna put it out in the universe. We hadn't asked yet, but you know, Trustee Gonzalez Hoy and I, we are just too adorable to be denied. We are gonna ask for Dr. Hurst to come and speak with the uh, academic subcommittee too. So we are gonna ask for Dr. Hurst to come to one of these meetings and to have a conversation with us around all things academic. Uh, Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, anything else?
The only thing that I would like to add is yes, uh, conversation about the fall, maybe in June. Um, or maybe even early July. Um, I, I, we'll, we'll have to talk to Dr. Wool about that um, on, on when we wanna have it. I know that we're supposed to talk about briefly this Wednesday, but you know, a, a more broader plan and what it's gonna look like. I would love to just kinda get the same presentation we got today from the summer, about the summer, same thing about the fall. Um, uh, that's, you know, as much as we can. Um, so we'll have to talk about that. That would be the only other item that I would like to add.
I agree with that one hundred percent, and we need to make sure that when we're doing this fall planning. I know that Ms. Johnson spoke to the fact that when they're, when we're doing these planning, we have to do it early enough because they have transportation partners that they work with, and they have, and this stuff needs to have lead time in it. So we wanna make sure that we're not backing people in a corner and that we're giving everybody enough time to make sure that they're planning, that the plan can be implemented properly. So uh, Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, thank you. That's a great catch. I wanna talk about fall reopening every day and twice on Sunday, because we need to get started and we need to start pushing things out, so we can start getting feedback. We need a good feedback loop when it comes to fall reopening. Um, I do wanna put out there on the radar that we wanna make sure, um, and our sped department, if you're still there, we wanna make sure that we are uh, we have adequate transportation for the kids that are in the spring program. I know you guys said that that's getting in place and it's gonna be there very soon for them to uh, make sure that all of our students who are, who are um, coming back for spring, they have the transportation that they need to get there. Again, we wanna make sure as a uh, board that we're not putting any barriers in your way. So we need to make sure that the fall planning is out there, so you can then um, have your partners for the transportation be prepared and be ready to implement anything that we can do to help.
They can add just a little bit of context to that.
Sure.
So normally, we have at least a month to six weeks before any change in sort of the year in order to get ready for transportation. And because of, you know, our desire to get students back really quickly, we had a really short turnaround with spring. So First Student has been working very, very closely with us, and I wanna give just a huge shout out to our clerical staff, Rosa Moreno, who handles transportation. She has literally been up till eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock at night, making sure that all the student information is in there accurately. So we are very appreciative for the partnership with First Student, and also very appreciative that they are taking our desire for safety very seriously, and you know, there are just a number of steps that have to be in place. Um, so we understand that this has been a, has been a barrier for some of our families this first um, week and a half. Um, but it is one of the most vital parts of the safety of our whole program when our students are on transportation and this must be done properly. We must know where kids are gonna be, when, who to drop them off with. Those things are so critically important. So we are moving as quickly as we can to do this safely and accurately. And um, First Student has been just really wonderful and trying to partner with us. But ESY and fall, it's why we're doing this all so early, so that there will be no barriers and we'll be back to a smooth and consistent, um, you know, process with transportation. So we absolutely understand families' frustration with this, and it was just the best we could do under the, you know, to balance everybody's needs right now.
And let me add to that.
Constant communication as well, to make sure families know exactly what's happening.
And, and let me add to that, there is one thing the board can do to help us on Wednesday night, three letters, please. Y E S. We are actually bringing the First Student contract early so that they're up and ready to go for ESY and everything else in the summer, because that contract expires. And they're giving us a lower rate for the cost of living increase than normal, because they are good partners. So that is what the board can help us.
Well, you saw my face. I was like, yes to what? So, okay, so yes to the, yes to the first, yes to the First Dean of Transportation contract. Okay, I got you.
And Trustee.
Just, you know, a little plug for the work that we do, and that, that one's coming.
He threw me off because he was like, why yes? I was like, what does that stand for? He was talking about acronyms. It's like, you totally threw me for a loop, so uh, okay, good to know.
All right, so I appreciate that. Uh, Ms. Hardy, thank you so much for the context around that. Um, I saw Ms. Jean's hand up, but then it went away. So I just wanna give space if she wanted to have, if she wanted to say something, but I'm not sure. Oh, wait, it's up again. Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, can we let, can we let this comment? Okay.
All right, Jean, you may unmute.
Sorry, I typed it in the chat instead. Um, I was wondering if there was a way for the summer um, to have the teachers be able to specify if they wanted to work with someone who is vaccinated or not, or if they didn't care if they're vaccinated or not, because honestly, that's one thing that kept me away from spring. To, to possibly be working with an adult in the room that's not vaccinated.
Thank you so much for your comment. Dr. Wool, you heard that comment, so you know, you have to figure that out. Um, so it's like you had something that is a concern, so let's put it on the list of talking to people about, you know, the proper entities that be that need to talk to it. Um, Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, do you have, and thank you so much, Ms. Jean, for your comment. Uh, Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, anything else?
Just uh, thank you to uh, Ms. Hardy, um, Ms. Avanasi, uh, Ms. Neely Johnson, Mr. Chilcott for the presentation. Um, Ms. Rebenberg for uh, taking notes as always and supporting us, and Dr. Wool for staying here and, and participating, even though he wasn't intended to. So I appreciate it to you, Chair Smith Foles, for always running a great meeting. I appreciate it.
Well, you know, great meeting, great people, they go together. Uh-oh, my mama calling, sorry. Um, I told her I would be out at six. Um, great meeting, great people. You guys did great. Thank you for everyone who tunes in and listens and your comments. They are well received and we um, the, the comments are really our marching orders. So we really appreciate you calling in and letting us know what needs to be done, because then we can pass it to staff and staff can then go forth and get some things accomplished. Thank you, everyone, for your presentation. Thank you, OASIA. Thank you, sped department. Thank you, Mr. Chilcott. We really appreciate it. Thank you, uh, our interpreter that is here always that's helping us out. We really, really appreciate you all, and we will see you all very soon. Keep an eye out. We may have a meeting before May twenty-fourth, but we'll definitely have one on May twenty-fourth, and it's six-ten. It's six-eleven, but it's six-ten-ish. So that's the end of the meeting. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, another one in the bank. We did well. Thank you, everyone. Bye. Have a great night.